I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We did call a meeting to order from D.C. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh.
Minutes from last week's meeting.
I read them at home and everything looked good, so I would move.
Sorry. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ooh. Minutes approved. Anyone generally publicly concerned? Anyone have a specific thing? Apparently not. Are we trying to have Cheryl come up?
Yeah.
He's got bigger and better things to do, but I appreciate her being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, thanks for the invitation.
Thanks for coming.
You got it. I'm here today on behalf of Humboldt County Housing. Um, and I'd like to give you a little summary of Humboldt County Housing. The success of Humboldt County Housing Corporation can be attributed to the financial support of both the City of Humboldt and Humboldt County, along with the hard work of the volunteer members. The current members include Dave Dodgens, V- Van Koom, Donnell Scow, Rick Peterson, Clifton Caliphatic, Carl Mattis, Donnell, oh, excuse me, Amy Donahue, Kurt Whittlesey, Supervisor Ewok, Humboldt City Administrator, and myself. To assist Humboldt County Housing, which is a nonprofit corporation, we have received funds annually from Humboldt County and the City of Humboldt. Since Humboldt County Housing utilizes no full-time staff, these funds are used to conduct engineering studies, provide matching funds for state and federal grants, and low-interest loans, pay for professional services, and conduct housing, county housing needs assessments. Humboldt County has foresight to address the lack of housing in our county as far back as nineteen ninety-seven. They saw the need to assist in forming Humboldt County Housing in the fall of nineteen ninety-seven. Projects that have been developed and received assistance because of Humboldt County Housing are as follows. The ID apartments, which were constructed in nineteen ninety-nine, seventeen single-family lots in River View Heights Third Edition, that was August of two thousand, partnership in creating the extension of water and sewer mains in River View Heights Third Edition to make Willow Ridge, um, the Willow Ridge Edition feasible, which created twenty lots for both single and multifamily housing. Assisted with converting Fourteenth Avenue Southwest and Pioneer Drive into a paved street. Um, that used to be an unaccepted, um, street. And in addition, that forms three additional lots in two thousand and three. It facilitated the L-Hap grant for remodeling the Scandin- Scandinavia Building, which credited eight rental units for single-family housing. It provides continual support to the Building Trades Program. The success of this program is based on the partnership between Humboldt Community Schools, Iowa Central College, Humboldt County Housing, and local b- businesses. This program started in nineteen ninety-nine, and today the students are constructing the Eighteenth Project. Many of the past students are currently working in areas as contractors, electricians, plumbers, et cetera. Humboldt County Housing purchases the lots for the home and applies for the financing. They carry the financial bet for that. All profits and losses for the program are observed, or, or, all profits and losses are absorbed by the program of Humboldt County Housing. The, um, school year of two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty through the partnership between the county and the Building Trades Program, that project is coming along nicely. The cabin's out at, um, Sheldon Park. It also provides assistance with application and administration of the CDBG grant for housing rehabilitation. That's an annual application basis. River View Heights Fifth Edition provided fifteen additional lots in the May of, in the spring of, um, two thousand and seven. They also developed Eagle Ridge, uh, which began at the end of two thousand and twelve. Humboldt County Housing purchased the Buske property and developed, um, seventy-one acres into Phase One, had twenty-three lots, and Phase Two had twenty lots. Today, eleven lots are still available. The lots do require a construction within a five-year, um, five years of the date of purchase. Lot ten was sold to the county for future development of green space, and Lot twenty was donated to the city for a park. In the spring of two thousand and sixteen, the extension of Eagle Ridge Drive assisted in the private development of, purchased by Ryan and Abby Harclaw. Four homes have been completed in that development. In two thousand and thirteen, a demo grant program was established. Qualified property owners can receive up to seventy-five hundred dollars to demolish unsightly property in Humboldt County. The only stipulation is that you must rebuild a single-family residence on the, on the actual lot. In two thousand and thirteen, funds were secured to construct a low-to-moderate dwelling. After lengthy building, or, planning, the Building Trades Program constructed a duplex on that, as that project. The homes completed, um, had to sell for no more than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to qualify for the low-to-moderate stipulations. The housing need assessment in two thousand and thirteen, um, showed that moderate-priced housing was needed. Um, you know, moderate-priced housing, um, we basically termed it to be under two hundred thousand. At that time, um, unsightly, the Rapidated Mobile Home Park was converted into eight moderate-priced homes. The lots were available for a dollar to any person or contractor. The stipulations were that construction must start within thirty days of the date of purchase and not sell for two hundred thousand. All of those homes were sold. In two thousand and eighteen, Humboldt County Housing purchased fourteen lots in West River Acres. Lengthy discussion has been held on the development of this property, and that's still on the table with further discussion. In two thousand and nineteen, Royal Three-Sixty has been in contact with Humboldt County Housing for ways to partner with rural communities for affordable housing. I look for more positive action in this area in twenty twenty for Humboldt County. On a continuous basis, Humboldt County Housing provides market information, zoning assistance, tax incentive information, and conducts housing needs assessments. In summary, Humboldt County Housing has been very proactive in addressing the housing needs for Humboldt County. Approximately a hundred and ten homes have been built to date, and the increased assessed valuations generated by this growth speaks for itself. Addressing the housing needs for both Humboldt County and the surrounding area are critical for continual growth in our region and workforce. Humboldt County Housing respectfully requests seventy-five hundred for twenty twenty. Questions? It's a lot of information.
I know, it's like, wow.
It's just that silent nonprofit in our county. And I guess one of the, on a side note, um, housing has been a passion of mine and others in our county. Um, my day job with Homeward covers eleven counties, of which Humboldt County participates in that also. Um, and then it covers twenty-two other counties. But Humboldt is looked at as, um, kind of the leader in our surrounding region. And a lot of these other homes, they're luck, or, excuse me, counties, they're lucky if they get one home a year built. So, um, it doesn't happen overnight, and I, we just greatly appreciate the support from the county in making this happen.
Well, someone asked me that, um, like over in Webster City on twenty there where they need that housing areas. And then in Badger down here, when you go through town in that little area that they're developing down there. And they said, well, where's, after listening to that list, where don't you guys have your finger?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I didn't realize that all those developments had been started basically through.
What happened with that?
Yeah.
Right.
Wow, that's a lot.
Where's that, like, the last one you were talking about, it hasn't been developed on the, in the very area?
It is, um, on West River Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, the, um, undeveloped.
Oh, okay.
Lot down there towards the, um, gravel road.
North side, huh?
Yeah.
Where that part of town sucks, sticks out, that's right in that area.
Oh, okay.
Off of the Billings, um, and area.
You know, and the beauty of it is that Humboldt County Housing, in doing it, and with the just dollars, we can go in and do it, sell the lots for, you know, probably under-market price. And the day is to get the tax base rolling for the county.
Get the housing up now.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, very good.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Earl.
And you're just under your time.
Yeah. I certainly take that into consideration.
Definitely.
To be under time?
No. After that's all said and done, yeah.
And also, like, just to make sure, Peggy, you got the Homeward? Yeah. All right, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll come back and talk anytime.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving along.
Better let people know what's going on, too.
Dean down here.
She, she parked out in the fifteen-minute parking stall.
Oh, so that's why, okay.
I don't plan on being here with a little more than fifteen minutes.
Perfect.
So, she's just under her time of fifteen.
No, that's awesome. I went, okay.
I was like, what did that?
She goes, I don't plan on being here more than fifteen minutes. Okay.
Didn't know if you'd be here at some point, but, uh, it's entirely up to you folks if you have any questions on the approving the hire of, uh, two, uh, part-time jailers. If you have that to accomplish.
Well, um, Rick also sent me a text on, on, uh, just landfill. If I can find the right text. He said, as far as he knows, everything is up to, I was wanting to let you know that, uh, I thought everything in the landfill report looks fine, so I would make a motion if you want to go to the landfill.
Yeah, let's take a look at the Humboldt County Senator Landfill Conditions Financial Report. Did you just mention that?
I didn't see a copy of it.
We don't.
No.
Okay.
Nope, I think you have one here. There's not much to it, but.
I'd be bricks on that. I appreciate his comment, Bruce.
Well, I'm the alternate. I've never got to go to the meeting, so I keep telling him to remind me when they have a meeting, but I would make a motion to accept that. As primed.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ooh. Carry for the financial report. Well, if you want to give Dean a couple minutes, we can run through our committee reports.
Can do that. Casey has something.
I.
I don't, he didn't hear anything.
Don't think so on this, no, but let's, you can do that. We gotta do it anyway. Do I have to sign this, or?
No.
No.
Um, for me, last week, Monday, we had a budget workshop after, on Monday there after our regular scheduled meeting. Then on Thursday, uh, went down to the supervisors' meeting at the Embassy Suites. Um, visited there, listened to several different meetings. I'm pretty sure that somebody will give us a update as to the last meeting, but, uh, also got to visit with Senator Cryenbrink was there for lunch. Got to visit with him a little bit, so, uh, other than that, that's all I had for the week.
I, again, I did the budget also afterwards on Monday, and then Thursday went down to the statewide meeting. Um, I thought the statewide meeting was very good because it actually hit on all three things that I'm very interested on, and talked about the mental health for the children, and, um, then, of course, IWD. And, uh, how that ended up is, basically, we're going to go back to our fifteen regions. Um, so, but, you, the deadline was to have everything done by June thirtieth. There's like five things we have to do. We have fiscal agent, we have to have a, um, a service person, a, a service provider, we also have to have a, um, somebody that will, um, take care of the, um, meeting agendas and things like that, get everything posted. And then, once we get that, but they've upped that, that date now, they prefer to have it by May fifteenth. So, but, uh, we're gonna have a meeting, excuse me, we're gonna have a meeting probably, I think, what was it? It was kind of on my calendar. Um, I think it's next week, but I haven't got it down on my thing. But anyway, we're gonna have a meeting, um, with all of us together, because we'll have to figure out what we're gonna do moving forward, who we can have. Heather Garcia, she takes care of the Des Moines area. Um, she's there, um, person too that does all the agendas and things, so she's gonna help us kind of get through the step parts of it. So we've just gotta find somebody that's part-time. It, it won't be that many hours. Um, yeah. So then, once we get our region done, so that we can get our money to our area, and we're, we're good to go, then we'll look at possibly joining other counties, just so that we can, um, it'll just, it, they will help us, but we don't want twenty-four counties. That's too many. As we found out with CSS having twenty-two. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell, basically.
Okay, Monday, the budget hearing. Uh, Tuesday, uh, P.A. meeting, Humboldt. Prove the claims and stuff. Wednesday, our Midas meeting that was supposed to have been the week before. We had that Fort Dodge. And, uh, from there, I went on down to Des Moines for Thursday's meeting. That's all I had. While I was down there, Bruce and I talked to this guy, and then I got Eric, and we went back over and talked to him some more. It's a griller for the roads. And what I liked about it, you could pull it with a pickup, the smaller unit, he said. And he will come up and bring one up and demonstrate it for us. But he said, in these frost boils and stuff, you can't get a maintainer down the road. You can put this behind a pickup and pull it. And, uh, level your road out with it. And, like I said, he was taking off for, down south for a while, but he would be back. He would bring it up, and, uh, we can take a look at it and see what we think. They wasn't that high-priced. But it, uh. I think Bruce looked down on the pricing, but yeah, that is very interesting, and I think that could really go a long way towards our. Pull the bigger one with the tractor or dump truck. And, uh, the smaller one, you can pull with the pickup. That was a very interesting, got a video on it? Yeah, it was very interesting to talk to this guy.
Sixty to eighty miles a day is what the thing they quoted is to be able to cover. So, to me, that's worth listening to his speech, or having him come up and give us a test and see where, we'll visit with Ben and see what his thoughts are.
It's quite interesting what he said, that, uh, you know, he said, you got frost boils out there, soft spots. He said, this will fill them right in and level them right out, and. Other than that, the meeting was very useful to me. I enjoyed it. I didn't stick around for the last one. I didn't figure that was Sandy's job.
It was a fun one.
Work on that, Dave. That's, yeah, that thing is, we'll be looking forward to him demonstrating that in the spring. So, uh, yeah, I've had, of course, we had the budget workshop last week. Um, and then, uh, Thursday also was down at the statewide supervisors' meeting at the Embassy Suites, along with everyone else here, and that was all I had officially this past week. Okay. Peggy, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Just gonna have Eric scan another one of these, because we got your name changed. It was in two places in France, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, I placed a copy here from FEMA for a thirty-day submission notice for the draft lead insurance rate map, and I gave a copy of this off for Trish, because I knew she was working on some of that for you guys. And then, other than that, I just have the homework housing thing, so that's it.
That's all right.
Okay, you might want that back.
Can I do that? So that's that.
Yep.
Do you want me to?
Well, I, I don't think. Is there any question from anybody on, like, it's just formality?
I can't imagine if there's any questions that he wouldn't have been here, or at least called somebody, so. And wasn't Shirley, she wasn't full-time, right?
Right. And she, I talked to her at church yesterday. She said she's already worked two days, so.
So she's ahead of the group.
Yeah.
Well, I'd make a motion to accept Shirley's hire as a certified part-time at the rate of fifteen thirty-two an hour.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh. Motion carries. Erica Dunleavy?
I'll make the motion to approve Erica Dunleavy at the rate of fifteen thirty-two part-time jailer, starting two one.
You second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ooh. Erica's fast. So, Dean is gonna be up there at some point in time, because I know we had a couple of questions, and we went through the budget last week, and he said he would get by, but he didn't give us a definite time. Is there anything else that, uh, anybody has for the good of the cause?
Well, I got a call from Scott Cobb yesterday, and evidently he has been having, he's on the corner of C forty-nine and P twenty-nine. Um, I think that's, uh, Tinkin built that originally.
Yep.
That corner, that's how I remember it.
Yep, that's it, y'all. I forget this for ten minutes. Yeah, we know where it is now.
Clearback top.
The clearback, I could say, right, clearback top. But anyway, he said that there are a lot of semis that are going on that road that, um, because they're privately owned, either with grain trailers or livestock trailers on that road. And a lot of them don't have mufflers. And so, and a lot of them use Jake brakes when they come on there, and so it's really, really loud at his area, you know? And in the summer time, it's just almost, he says he can't even open his windows when the, when the weather's good, because it's just so, because it's, the traffic there is all the time then, plus there's the gravel, or the gravel pit that they use that road for. So he just, he didn't know if there was a way where we could put maybe even a sign that says, "No Jake Brakes", like a quarter of a mile back before the house, you know? He, he didn't know if that was a possibility. He says he knows there's nothing, but he's already called the DOT, because he did call Dean about it, and Dean said, well, that's a DOT, you know, issue, and the DOT said that, yeah, they're supposed to have working mufflers, but it's, it's hard to enforce unless you come across them, you know? So he just said that, you know, if we could get a "No Jake Brake" sign. And I know there's one as you come into hu- you know, into Humboldt and that. I don't know how it works in the country. I said I'd bring it up.
Well, that's fair.
So, because I didn't know how that was. I didn't know if I needed to get with, um, Ben.
Ask if, because that would be, obviously, it's a county road.
Right.
Versus the state road.
Right.
And that would be the question, to see if there is anything that.
Prevents a sign from being.
Jurisdiction that, yeah, you can put it up there.
Okay. And then he also said, um, there's an intake on the north side. He thought it was a fifteen-inch tile. He says it's a grate. He said, somebody's run over it, and it's broke. He said, so in the spring, we'd probably want to look at getting that taken care of.
Did you?
Excuse me, I gotta get with Ben on that. I haven't gotten with Ben on that.
Or have any idea if that's a drainage district structure tile?
They're all gonna be working on it.
He said they, he said they fixed it once, and then somebody ran over it again. And it's all broken up. So it must be in a bad.
And it's in the ditch.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm almost positive it's a county tile, I'm sure.
But my point on that, Sandy, was you could put that in as a drainage district.
Oh, okay.
Both, actually, give it as a drainage district tile. But these in the right way, probably mention it to secondary roads would be the first step. That's right there. There is a tile that runs there.
I'm almost positive it, we've fixed it off work on it a couple of different times.
Yeah, he did say that it was, since he's been there, it's been worked on once, but it's broke again. So I don't know what we can do to maybe.
It is, say fifteen, I think, it says.
Humboldt Webster. Just to cover all bases, but didn't, yeah, I've got secondary roads and all, for sure.
The other side of that, I mean, back to the Jake Brake deal, they've been running out a whole lot. Can you put a sign up? Unless a trooper deputy.
Right.
DOT, somebody sitting there and listens to them come up to the corner.
Mm-hmm. Not much you can do about it, you know?
They, they're supposed to not do it coming into town.
I know. I hear a lot of the time.
Come down the hills, both directions.
Yeah. And that's what I told them. I said, well, you can do it. I said, I know there's one in Humboldt. But I said, I live, what, one block off the, the highway, so I, we can hear when we're outside, too. So it's just.
They do it just because, A, supposedly it sounds cool.
Right.
And it, uh, doesn't use their brakes, so it's the compression that's slowing the, the truck down, so.
Oh, okay, so they're not wearing down their brakes.
They're not wearing down their brakes, but it wears down your ear, the ear.
Right.
Smart one, hearing aid, so.
Oh, wow.
Oh, I bet.
My, uh, my truck doesn't, it has one, but it doesn't, it's not near that loud, not near that cool, so.
So. One thing upcoming, Peggy will probably hear from these folks from, uh, speaking of being on the supervisors' meeting, uh, from Northland Public Finance Company, and Heidi Clu has been here before and just said, yeah, hey, you know, representing Northland Finance, Public Finance Company, uh, is gonna get herself on the agenda here at some point. They will be contacting you. And, uh, visiting with us about bonding, uh, so more or less taking out a loan, because we do have the expense of this new radio system upcoming. And that was the gist of it. And, uh, Hamilton County did this. They seem to be pretty pleased with how everything is going. It's, the interest rates are historically low right now. Getting involved with this bonding, so looking forward to her coming up, um, and kind of giving us the rundown on how this will work, or it could work, because we'll have to look at, I don't know how much that's gonna be, but it's gonna be a lot. And I know we got to discuss some options. This would be a good option, so I, I don't. It was, they talked there. It would probably be in the fairly near future. Probably something that we can afford you.
Peggy, you have the embassy, you know, the open area, we usually have that one room where they have all of the people, the.
Vendors.
Vendors sitting out there. Well, evidently, their building was pretty well full, because they had the power show, and so the hotel was pretty much full. They had all those people crammed into that little area. I mean, when you walk through, it was like this, so you could get between, it was.
Plus, they had a lot more vendors.
Yeah.
Because I, they even believed in them, the vendors, but. I'd say it was stuffed. Double easily, from what.
Oh, really?
Yep. Well, remember last year?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they had some vendors, and I said, am I imagining this? Just to let, I said, no, we have a lot more vendors this year than they have previous years.
So it was, and then all of a sudden, like, the last meeting, they were gonna come out, the place is empty.
Empty. There was nothing there.
They left.
Yeah.
So, and evidently, they were trying to pay their parking garage off in a year, because when they, I wanted to pay my parking, he says fifteen dollars. I said, fifteen dollars? I just got here this morning.
I know it.
Fifteen bucks, like, okay.
I know twenty-four.
So you were there overnight.
I was overnight.
So, wow.
Where'd you guys go to your conference?
Embassy Suites.
Embassy Suites.
We got one at the, uh, newspaper, one at the, uh, where the heck are we going, the Marriott? I think this is.
Yeah.
It's pretty.
That cost you twenty-four, too.
I was gonna say, yeah, that's pretty pricey.
And if you can't get into there, you gotta go down the street and use the public one just down the street.
That always pretty bucks out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then you walk the sidewalk, like, block and a half.
Well, if we don't have anything, you know.
Well, I do have, and this is actually a question for Peggy, but I'll just tell you what I'm gonna ask it. Uh, the, and we went through a lot. Uh, the, we went through our budget last week for the weed control. You have a quote from Don, he would like this authorized, so to speak. And, uh, obviously that puts us as a, a quote contract with him to do the work. And it allows, he has documentation for his insurance that covers everything he's doing, so really not on us, it's on him. And it gives us, it's a county protection, um, with, you know, it's just a formality, but he said he does need a signed copy of this and we probably want a signed copy on file. So we need to put this on the agenda to.
Yep, if you're taking some formal action, you would need to.
I mean, basically just signing, yeah, can we put this on next week's then? Just, it's a formality, but yeah, we want to make sure and get it taken care of.
Sure.
Because we've got the money there and everything budgeted, but, so can we please do that for next week then? And I'll hang on to these.
Okay.
So.
So how do you want me to word that?
Just accept the quote from, or should we control specialist?
Okay.
Put our stamp of approval and.
You bet.
Is Don coming down to do his presentation or is he just?
Uh, he has not said.
Okay.
I mean.
Not that I'm.
If you want to know anything, if you want an extra presentation, you can talk to everything we've talked about. And this pretty well sums it up here in this.
He's very thorough when he does his.
Yeah, he's been extremely, extremely good. You know, we've kicked around different ideas, what we have done, what we're gonna do, and, uh, he's always willing to stop by, but it's, I don't think there's a need to at this point.
I also have on the agenda for next week too, to decide whether you're gonna meet the week of the 17th. Is that President's Day? Yeah, 17th is President's Day. So I'll be thinking about whether you wanted to meet that week. I think it's gonna depend on how much we get through in budget today, um, and what I can get to you next week. I'd like to ask some finals to you next week. So I've been pushing pretty hard this last week to try to get things in the computer so we can get some finals ready for you.
Anything else?
I'll take the adjourn.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.